Good evening, everyone. Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
I have a motion to exit executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to uphold disciplinary tribunal appeal 230423?
I make a motion.
A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A. 1 through 22, B. 1 through 3, C. 1 through 15, and D. the personnel section for employment contracts for fiscal year '26?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCall, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, now that the bowling party is done, welcome, guys. If you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular called board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. It's April 15th, just past 6:00 PM. Welcome, we're glad to see so many of you here. Right up front, I'm going to ask Ms. Sarah Taylor to come up and help us with some recognitions.
Good evening. This is my favorite part of the day to give out recognitions for our school district. I'm Sarah Taylor, Associate Superintendent of Student Services, and I am going to actually, at the beginning, go ahead and flip it over to Haya Villa, who is our Health Service facilitator, who helps lead all of our nurses to do our first recognition.
Thank you, good evening. I have the pleasure tonight of recognizing an exceptional demonstration of heroism in care by a team of staff members at Coming Elementary School. This past December, a student experienced a life-threatening medical emergency. In those critical moments, this team responded with remarkable speed, composure, and professionalism, delivering lifesaving care. Thanks to their training, they administered CPR without hesitation and saved the student's life that day. By the time EMS arrived, our student was alert and responsive. These staff members are true heroes. Preparation is essential, and our school nurses play a vital role in ensuring that our staff is not only trained, but they are confident in responding to medical emergencies when they occur. This event serves as a powerful reminder that heroes come in many forms, and preparation truly saves lives. Tonight, we proudly present the Health Services Hero Award to three members of this team who are not able to be here tonight, but we have Taphne Cherico, a classroom teacher, Shelby Carpenter, the school counselor, Michelle Hemrich, which is a classroom parapro. Before I start with these next two members of this team, these honorees, I want to take a moment and acknowledge these two. Something remarkable, less than two years ago, we were here, and these individuals stood here being honored for saving the life of a fellow staff member. It's almost unbelievable and profoundly moving that once again, they were called upon to deliver this lifesaving care, this time to a student. So, join me tonight in recognizing Allison Ingram, classroom teacher. And Kimberly Crockett, the school nurse at Coming Elementary. On behalf of our entire district, we extend our deepest gratitude for your compassion, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to the health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff. Thank you.
All right, next, I want to ask Dr. Aaron Archibald to come up. I know he was here, I saw him. There he goes, he's got to go reverse. We want to congratulate Aaron Archibald, who was named the Georgia Principal of the Year by Junior Achievement. The hard work of Aaron and his team at West Forsyth High School has been a reflection of this program, which truly embodies community in the classroom. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Now, if I could go ahead and get our West Forsyth High School athletes to go ahead and come line up here, and we're going to recognize you guys tonight. First, I'm going to ask Timothy Herbou to come up. Timothy was our state champion at the 6A GHSA heavyweight, and we are so very proud of him. Congratulations. Okay, all right. Now, if you're here to help support Timothy, would you please stand up and be recognized too, his family and friends? All right, next, we have Addison Spiner, who is a freshman. Addison, she took state championship in the 100-fly swim, the 6A GHSA competition, so congratulations. If your friends or family of Addison, we want you, please stand up, we want to recognize All right, next, we have our team of 6A GHSA swim team champions in the 400 free relay. So, we have Kayden Anderson, who's a senior this year. We have Colton Carter, who's a junior this year. Nathan Becka.
Congratulations.
And we have Tyler McGinn.
So, Mr. Grimes wants to raise you guys.
Do we have Michelle Hindi, who is our swim coach here? Yeah, Michelle, stand up, be recognized. And while they're taking pictures, if we have any family or friends who also are here to support these young men, we'd like to recognize you. So, each month, we actually have an Employee of the Month that we recognize at our board meetings. This Employee of the Month, we actually have sponsors for this that get a lot of good stuff, so our sponsors are Jim &amp; Nick's Barbecue, Northside Hospital, Community Cup, Coming Family Chiropractor, Freedom Mill, State Farm, DMSI, and Peach Skin Sheet. So, we're excited that they are supporting this. So, I'm personally very excited about this month because this person actually is in our department. So, selfishly, I want to recognize her, but Tracy O'Connor. So, now you have to stand here and listen to me read some of this, so just bear with me. So, I'm not going to read the whole book that was submitted for her, but I'll read a few inserts. "It was difficult to choose just one above attribute for Tracy because she exemplifies them all. She has dedicated many years to our psychologist team and to the special ed preschool. Tracy is calm, cool, and collected, and she has a way of communicating and building relationship with parents during what may be one of the scariest times of their lives. She has presented evaluation results with compassion, sets an example for everyone else on the team, and over the course of her career, she has adapted many changes and embraced innovation, including updates in assessment, changes in processes and procedures, and working with new staff. She works well with her team, and they have developed seamless process for the increasing number of evaluations they do each year. I can't think of anybody more deserving of this award." Next one. "Tracy serves as preschool psychologist and is often the first experience that families have in Forsyth County schools. She is compassionate and kind, she communicates clearly, and always takes extra time to explain to nervous parents the..." I know, I planned it. "...the process and the purpose behind evaluation. Tracy is extremely good to discuss difficult information with concerned parents and is equally as adept at testing young children. Her knowledge of development is outstanding. She works well with teammates from across the discipline and is always available to answer questions for the preschool team. Tracy gives us grace and consistency, and it has been a pleasure to work with her each day." Okay, I'm only going to read one more. It's a book. "Tracy is very organized, knowledgeable, and efficient in her role. She leads our evaluation team through difficult situations with the grace and understanding of the needs of our preschool families through the first encounters of our school system. She is both gentle and firm when needed to help everyone understand what is best for our new students entering the system. She's an expert in her field and knows all there is regarding standardized testing and protocols and eligibility regulations. She is an excellent resource for others and is always willing to help answer questions. She has served us well for very many years and is very deserving of this honor." Congratulations, Tracy. And I know there's several in our department. If you're here to support Tracy, would you please stand up so we can recognize you? I think we're good. All right, now, I'm going to hand over the mic for our alumni highlight to Ms. Dugan, Dr. Dugan.
We've had the honor each month to bring to you some alumni spotlights. We are sharing a little bit about the stories for our alumni, where their journeys take them in college, career, and beyond, and so we are very, very excited to share this one because it's not only a Forsyth County Schools graduate, this is also somebody who came back to work in our community. And for some of you, he may look very familiar. So, who knows Deputy Drew? Okay, it's a good amount of people. Deputy Drew is actually, and I had to write this down, he is the Southwest SRO and Marine Patrol Sergeant. So, he is an SRO, he is a school resource officer in our schools, and he now has moved from a school base to supporting multiple schools within our district with the goal number one of keeping our students safe. He is also a very proud graduate of North Forsyth High School, class of 2004. And so, we have a video where he's going to talk a little bit about just some questions we asked him regarding the learner profile that is so present in our school system, is really that guiding work in what we do, and just any advice he has for our high schoolers, and some of you are here in this room. So, here is Deputy Drew.
I'm Sergeant Drew Long with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. I graduated from North Forsyth High School in 2004. I did, I graduated high school, and then I think it was 48 days later, I went to work in the jail. I worked in jail for two months, I did animal control for two years, I went to patrol for about a year and a half, and then I've been here ever since, and I'll be 21 years in July. For me, it starts out like it did when I was a resource officer, I do my school traffic first thing in the morning, but then I move around from school to school. And rather than being assigned to one school, I'm assigned to several schools, so I just move about during the day wherever I'm needed. I was doing traffic this morning, and I have to end my day every day at the great Vic Creek Creek Middle School, doing traffic in the middle of Post Road, it's wonderful. It takes a different kind of cop, per se, to be an SRO. I've never been one for traffic or, you know, investigations. I enjoy that stuff, but I enjoy making relationships with the staff and the kids and being part of something bigger than just me. So, the number one job of an SRO in a school is to keep that school safe. And if we don't build relationships with the kids and the staff, they don't know they can trust us. So, that's why we're here. We're here to give a friendly face to somebody that may not see that on a regular basis and be that safety net, you know, per se, at the front door if something should happen. Absolutely. I feel like, and there's been lots of students that have issues at home, that don't know how to get the help that they need that we can provide. Yes, they have counselors here, they have admin here, they have teachers here, they have friends here. We're an extra step. We can reach outside of that box within the school system and be like, hey, if this is what's going on, we've got this avenue we can take, and we can get you some help. And being the one that can kind of help orchestrate getting them to a safe place, I like that side of it. What I say to all students now is, especially in high school, do that little bit extra, because when you get out, you're going to have to do a lot of extra. This is as good as it gets, this is as easy as it gets, so do the work now so that things come easier later. It used to be here that this was a great place to be from. For me, it has been a great place to stay. I've raised my family here, I've got kids in high school here, and it's a great place
It's okay to clap for Deputy Drew, he would love it. And so, that's just a little bit of a story of somebody. A lot of times, we talk about those careers you can take as students after high school, and a lot of times, that will look like going into college, and that will look like military career, but it can also be different careers. You heard him say just days after his graduation, he was gainfully employed, he was working toward retirement, which doesn't seem like a big deal now, y'all, but I promise it is. And so, we know and understand, love our SROs, we have a great partnership, our school safety department, our student support department do an incredible job partnering with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, and so we're excited to share our alumni story tonight. Thank you.
All right, we also are going to highlight our Superior Spotlight tonight is DeSanna Middle, so I'm going to turn it over to Keith Sargent, their principal, tonight to get us started.
All right, hopefully I won't mess this up, so. Technology does not like me. All right, good, good, okay. Good evening, it's certainly a pleasure to be here this evening to talk to you about our Life Skills class, but before I dive into that, I just wanted to take a moment to thank this Board of Education as well as Dr. Young for your continued support of our schools, of our principals. For us to be able to have that support and that trust is one of the reasons why we're able to have a course like this Life Skills course that I'm going to be sharing with you this evening. But as always at DeSanna, we always start every faculty meeting, every meeting that we have, with our vision and mission is aligned with the district's vision and mission, safe, connected, thriving, and of course, providing that unparalleled education for all students to succeed. And by all, we mean all. DeSanna is a great place to work, it's a great place to be. Every morning, I get on the announcements, and I tell our students and our staff that we are the best middle school in all of America, and one of the reasons why I believe that is because of the people in our building, which is our greatest strength. By that, I mean our students, our staff, our families, and then our community supports. So, before I ask Ms. Schuster to come up, as well as some other students to come up to talk to you all about this Life Skills course, I wanted to give some background information about it so you have some context before Ms. Schuster comes up here. But one of the things that I wanted to talk about specifically with this Life Skills course was it was a great opportunity for us last spring when we had additional students, or excuse me, additional allotments for the following school year, thanks to Dr. Hershey and our Human Resources Department. And we felt as an administrative team at the time that we would make the greatest impact on our school building with our Connections classes. And so, Connections, just for reference, it could be referred to as specials for elementary school, high school calls it electives, but the middle school model for Connections classes is students experience a different class every nine weeks, and that's two different Connections classes with one exception unless a student is enrolled in band or chorus. And so, we felt strongly at DeSanna that we had a great, already great Connections department, but we were looking for something different, something unique, something engaging, and we turned to the best resource that we possibly could, which was our staff, specifically our leadership team, and we challenged them to help us come up with a classroom that we felt like would be impactful for our students. And in less than 24 hours, I had Ms. Jen Schuster knocking at our door and trying to convince us to really implement this Life Skills class. And so, Life Skills class is not something that's necessarily new or innovative, it's just something that we felt like is, we made unique to the needs of our students. We've had other schools in our district, North Middle School specifically, who we partnered with for a little while just as we were getting onboarded with this course and trying to figure out the ins and outs of it. But really, you know, it's gone from this course that parents were asking me questions about, like my child's enrolled in this Life Skills course, to how do I get my kid in Life Skills? And so, we've come a long way, and again, this is year one for us with this Life Skills course, and we still have a long way to go. And so, when Ms. Schuster presented this idea to us for this Life Skills course, I had a vision, I wanted a framework and a foundation for this course, a course, I needed to relate it back to our vision of safe, connected, and thriving. And then, I told Ms. Schuster that it needed to align with the five tenants of the learner profile. And while we're not able to share, or Ms. Schuster will not be able to share, all the content and the curriculum with you all tonight, once you do hear from our students, and you do hear from one of our teachers, and you do hear from Ms. Schuster specifically, you're going to see alignment with that learner profile tonight. And of course, one thing with this course too that I challenged Ms. Schuster is adaptability. We live in this ever-changing, ever-evolving world, such as like artificial intelligence, that, you know, we didn't necessarily anticipate, you know, five years ago. And so, that's one of the challenges that I gave to her with this Life Skills course. And then, I also wanted some component of first aid and CPR, which is still in the works, but we're looking forward to next year specifically of offering a CPR component just for our seventh and eighth grade students, but we currently offer, or one of the units that she does is first aid. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jen Schuster, our Life Skills teacher.
I have to say, sitting there, I'm going off script from the jump, but I have this shit, like this is such an awesome opportunity to be here and speak with you board members this evening. It was literally a year ago that this was a baby, and here we are in the front row tonight to present it to you, and I'm just very thankful for this opportunity and feel very blessed, so. Second, I would like to immediately thank Mr. Sargent, the Assistant Principals, Ms. Bowie, and Ms. Maddox, and Mr. Grass, and that's not just in passing, that is a true thank you to the administration because they have supported this idea from the beginning, and they have allowed me the space and grace to try, fail, and succeed, and I'm very happy to be presenting this information to you now, so. Prior to this year and teaching Life Skills, I taught 32 years of physical education, health and PE, and during, wow, that sounds old up here on the mic. During those three decades, I have seen changes, as I'm sure many of us have. I was thinking today that the changes in 30 years, let's nip it down to the changes in the last five years, and then actually, let's go ahead and scale that down to the changes in the last one to two years because society is changing so fast, and we are literally trying to not only keep up, but get ahead of the speed of it. So, I found that with the increase of technology, there had been a decline in interface communication, critical thinking skills, problem solving, and this was in PE. And so, when the opportunity came up, as Mr. Sargent said, I truly wanted to make this pitch, and I feel that the why of this class is that it's a need, not a want, that not only is it a need for our students, but our parents are very excited about the content as our staff members and members in our community. So, with that said, I would like to make two notes, if I may. One is that the way our connections is scheduled, we have nine-week courses, I teach two sixth grade, two seventh, two eighth, and we rotate every nine weeks. So, I now, as of now, this fourth quarter, will have seen or am seeing now a total of over 720 students. So, that's the reach, that's how many students that I have the, I say the luxury, but the privilege to teach this class to. And number two, a year ago, in baby mode, I asked staff members, friends that are adults, friends that have children, broad-stroke top, what do we have? What are we looking at? What do you think would be of most importance? And literally, people were like, there was the script, it's the scroll and going through, and people have very strong opinions that especially adults or of the next generation grandparents, that there is a definitive need for some very basic skills that just aren't taught or offered right now at the middle school, but with this class, we're taking a bite into it. So, if, there we go, curriculum development. I told you that I have sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, I have anywhere from six to seven units in a grade, and I also have a total of 10 or 11 or 12 to choose from, to mix and match, because this year was truly a year to, I call it throwing jello, throwing jello, and seeing what sticks and what works and what needs to be changed. For sixth grade, I have the, which is personally, came directly from me because we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we said it in here, we say it every day in school, I wanted to do a little bit of a deeper dive with the Pledge of Allegiance. Voicemails and emails, how to write and construct emails, and also say and articulate well on the phone messages using the who, what, when, where, why model for information. And then, also, sixth grade has basic first aid, and that basically involves concussions, nosebleeds, sprains, strains, and also immediate ways to provide first aid for those. Seventh grade, empathy and sympathy, and the difference between both. We also talk about respect, respect amongst students, respect from students to me, and what usually has the most discussion is respect from what usually has the most discussion is respect from me to the students and what that looks like. We also go into tipping and what behaviors constitute what percentage to tip. Eighth grade, we also teach cursive signature, handshakes and introductions, and post-secondary options such as trade school, two-year education, post-education, and four-year. In those, we have a tiered approach when there is an overlap of content and for example, for sixth grade, for the emotional health unit, we have a words matter and appropriate adjectives to use, and I invite the counselor in to come in and have an open discussion with the students. Eighth grade, social emotional health would constitute describing healthier relationships, problem-solving, and critical thinking skills. I will end with, I have been certified in basic life support. If Heidi is here, is Heidi still here? Heidi Avila certified me. I'm instructor to certify other people and preferably students, eighth grade. So, that is, as Mr. Sergeant said, a goal for the next year. And I also took the mindfulness training, which I use sporadically this year, but we are going to go full-on all six grades prior to learning content in every class period. So, with that.
Thank you. We're going to listen from a few of our stakeholders that are here. Barrett, I'm going to ask you to come up, buddy, and share with you your experiences, okay?
Whenever we did the pledge of allegiance, we broke it down and wrote the definitions of the words, and we found out what it means to say the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to celebrate the patriots and the people in the army that supported us and got us through the wars. The notes that we did, we broke down, would be used for accurate accuracy on a sermon. We are also, we also did, wait, we also did write down exactly what Ms. Schuster told us to write down for the notes.
Sorry, Ms. O'Connor?
Yeah. Okay. Hi, I'm Hannah O'Connor. I'm a seventh grade reading teacher at DeSana Middle School, but Ms. Schuster asked me to come and just speak a little about homeroom teachers' perspective on this class. So, Ms. Schuster invites homeroom teachers in once a quarter to do a handshake practice with her students, so that they kind of have adults that either they've only met once or twice, maybe they've never met. It's really funny when they have to pretend they don't know you at all. It's like the most awkward one. So, we come in, and it's very evident, they've already had many lessons on how to properly shake hands. Ms. Schuster gives a lot of reminders, length of time for shaking your hand, firmness, she says no floppy fish when you're shaking hands. So, like, have a firm grip, make eye contact, good posture, smile when you're introducing yourself, give your full attention and time to whoever you're speaking to. So, those are kind of the things that they're practicing throughout the week before we come in. So, then, the teachers who come in, spread around the room, the students line up, shake our hands, introduce themselves to us. Then, we all sit down, give them feedback on how they did, and then we do it one more time. And they're able to receive that feedback, try one more time. We sit down, give our final feedback, and then we also just discuss, when would you need to do this? When would you introduce yourself? When would you shake hands with another adult? So, we kind of give them some for instances of when they're going to run across that in their lives, when they're introducing themselves to a college rep, when they're introducing themselves to a boss or a new teacher, a new coach, so that they feel like this is going to be applicable to their life. So, one thing that I've noticed, just the impact that it has, even just from the first round to the second round of shaking their hands, they gain confidence of meeting new adults and going through that uncomfortable experience for some students. I also just noticed at our school, students are more willing to greet you and ask you about your day and make eye contact with you, and that's something that's really struck me about our students, specifically at our school, that I think is really special, and I think a lot of that's due to Ms. Schuster and how she's taught the students to interact with adults. So, those are just some of the impacts that I noticed as a homeroom teacher and how we get involved as homeroom teachers in this life skills class.
I'm an eighth grade student and life school student this fourth quarter. I'm here to talk about cursive signature lesson that she walked us through. Firstly, she taught us the situations we needed to have in real life, needed to have this document, signing documents, contracts, and like applying for driver license, et cetera. She walks us through how to each letter, on, she has each letter on a sheet of paper on each table, and our goal of the lesson is to write her name, I write her full name on the end assignment. She gives us a few days to practice our name, and she, if you have any questions about it, she can walk you through how to do it. She speaks on continuing, continue the line and stopping and crossing the Ts and Xs and dotting the Is when you're done.
Hi, I'm Jen Weber. I'm Max's mom. Good job. I, I'm here to just present a parent's perspective, and I probably got chosen because I flagged Ms. Schuster down in the hallway about a month ago, and I just was praising her on this class. We were sitting down at our kitchen table and doing homework, and Max was writing his name, practicing his name. I thought, oh, this is really cool stuff. I also, when I remember when I got the syllabus from your class, I texted it to a family member, we have a family chat, and I took a picture of it and I sent it over, and I said, you know, Max is in this life skills class this semester, kind of look at what the syllabus is, look what he's going to be learning. And this just started this whole frenzy of conversation amongst my family, who have very similar children in the school system, not only here, but in other states as well, all around the same age, and it just really started this conversation of, wow, this is really what we're missing right now? And I think DeSana does a really good job, and I think our whole county does a really good job of really honing in on academics, and we're such brilliant students we have in our county. But I think sometimes the soft skills, ours is that part that kind of is, sometimes can be missing, that no offense to the children, to the teachers, it's just, that's just something that, you know, that we probably, you know, we're so focused on the curriculum. So, I also wanted to speak just from a professional environment as well. I have experience with hiring right out of college and even into high school as well. And again, those soft skills are often things that we see missing in today's world, so you might come to the table with these great experience and these great abilities to perform your job, but from an interviewer's perspective, we're always looking at, you know, what else can they do? Can they handle a conversation? Can they be in a boardroom? Can they, you know, handle a contractor, handle a client with ease? So, I think these are the types of skills that are really missing. But also, I wanted to say too, we're very passionate about this class, I wanted to say too, I think you had mentioned the word engaged, being engaged, and I think watching Max and his friends light up and talk about this class has been something a little bit different than I've seen from some of the other connections classes. And I think the connection there is that they can see the real-world application of these things, whereas a teacher sometimes teaches you something, like I'm never going to use this math, or I'm never going to use this history. This is something that they can actually go out today and practice and use, and I think that's, that's really telling for the class. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and if you guys ever need a parent perspective, let me know.
Hey, hey, Max. Max, Mr. Valdez, can you use some tips on his signature? It's horrible. So, hopefully you can help him out.
I might come to one of your next classes and get a lesson.
Ms. Schuster would love that, I'm sure. I'm Peyton Maddox, one of the assistant principals at DeSana, and just to kind of wrap us up tonight, I want to thank Ms. Schuster and the rest of our stakeholders that helped speak tonight, Barrett, Ms. O'Connor, Max, and Ms. Weber, just for being here to share the impact of the life skills course, and this is just a portion of the impact that we're seeing at our school. We're really proud of the development and the implementation of the course at this point, and genuinely are seeing the positive impact on our students. With just the preview of the course content that Ms. Schuster and our students provided to you tonight, I'm sure you saw lots of connection between that curriculum and our learner, our educator, and our leader profiles in many areas, specifically with effective communication, interpersonal skills, and then embracing innovation. And different people tonight have mentioned, you know, this is not a brand-new course in general, but it's innovative for us at DeSana, and we are just appreciative of the encouragement and really the charge from the board, from our district leaders, to use innovation as a means to respond to our school community. And so, moving forward, you know, we're excited to continue partnering with Ms. Schuster and continue getting feedback from the different stakeholder groups and looking at ways to measure the impact of the course, so that we're able to keep refining it and responding to the learners that are in our building. So, again, thank you to you guys for the opportunity to present tonight, and thank you to you guys for listening. And again, just thank you for your continued support of our team as we continue to work to foster that safe, connected, and thriving environment at DeSana. So, if you guys have any questions for us, we'll direct all those to Mr. Sergeant. No, really, any of us are happy to answer anything that you guys may have.
Well, I just got two comments. I think the signature, you know, one day you may have to sign checks. If you don't know what those are, ask your parents. But no, in all seriousness, I think it's great, like you mentioned first aid and CPR. You know, I, as I think everybody knows, I used to be the director of 901 here in Forsyth County, and you never know when you're going to need that skill, and you never know, and Mr. McCall can attest to that, you know, from his experience, and so, you never know when you're going to need that skill, and you never know, I mean, we've had students that, we gave an award earlier tonight, but we've also had students that have saved lives. And so, I think that's, it is fantastic that you, you know, that you went to add that in, and I would definitely encourage that.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys know, but this has been a huge passion of mine with critical thinking and civics and life skills. And I remember sitting in her principal's office at Forsyth Central and telling him that he needs to do this at the high school level. And, and now he's our superintendent.
Josh, I was right in the back.
And now he's our superintendent, and, you know, we've been looking and pushing at the state level for something at the high school requirement for these three classes coming together and making it like a requirement. And then, you get a lot of state pushback of, well, that's just another credit you're adding, and that's another FTE you got to add to your, you know, to the program and everything like that, and here you guys are doing it in middle school. Like, that is amazing, and so, thank you, thank you, thank you. I would like to challenge you though, if it's okay. You guys did such a great job tonight. Could we invite some of the senators and house representatives to come to DeSana and see this program, so I can say to them, and we can say to them, hey, this is what we're talking about, like, let's do this at the state, let's do this. And I encourage all the middle schools in the county to take the next step too, and let's really do this. So, I would like to, if it's okay, to invite them, we'll do a legislative day at DeSana and do this program, is that okay?
They need life skills too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a whole different story there.
So, I'm going to tell you a story, because I know my daughter would never watch this meeting, but when she was probably a junior in high school, she's a freshman in college now, she went out to eat with some friends, and it may have been one of the first times she ever went out without us to eat. So, afterwards, we pick her up and we asked her, did you leave a tip? And she said, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to do that. And so, first, we felt like failures as parents, and then, second, we made her go back and leave a tip. So, the restaurant industry is very grateful that you have a tipping, a tipping portion in this here, and I agree with Mr. McCall, I think this is something that I would love to see expanded, and if we can get some of these folks, decision-makers, to see the value, I think it'd be a great thing.
Yep, I agree. I just wanted to say thank you for presenting. I love seeing all the pieces of this class, the amount of confidence it probably instills in all the kids, just helps produce contributing citizens later. So, I appreciate the work you're doing.
And I will just chime in, first off, to say thank you for doing this, Keith. Jennifer, I couldn't think of a better, a better person to lead this initiative, so that's awesome. Now, last night, we had a town hall. An idea came up at town hall that I think would fit in perfectly with your class as you're looking to expand next year, but having some, some cell phone training, digital citizenship element maybe to develop if you're not all right, or if you are already, then, then that needs to be expanded as well. So, great job, guys, thank you so much.
Good job, guys. All right, we are going to take a short recess before we enter into the business portion of the agenda. If you have insomnia, it's a great meeting for you, you'll sleep well tonight. If not, this is a great moment for you guys to go, we're not going to get offended, we thank you guys for coming out. All right, we are going to get back with the program here. Next up is public participation on agenda items. As I understand it, there's no one signed up? All right. Next item is the consent agenda. The members should have all received the backup items and had a chance to review and ask questions. Are, is there any discussion or any questions? No? So, I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I think a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Ms. Hoys, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Next up, we have presentation and discussion items, and the first one up is Dr. Valerie Lowe. The better Lowe, for sure. Sorry. It's close, it's close, okay? All right. I'll pay for that one.
All right. Well, good evening. We are excited from Community Engagement and Lifelong Education to provide you guys a little bit of an update about the work that we've been doing the past nine months. And so, our work really aligns with the learner experience and culture, climate, and community, as you all know, so we just wanted to make that connection. This started, again, about nine months ago when we took parts of the Communications Department, Teaching and Learning, and the College and Career Development to kind of form one general focus around community development, community engagement. And so, you have seen this document before, but this just kind of outlines our structure in terms of where we focus our time, in terms of community engagement, community education, and the fine arts and workforce development piece that we do. So, we've tried to put together some pictures, just some basic information, so I'll just kind of zip through that and let you ask any questions that you may have. This is kind of what we, our staff, look like on paper in terms of what we all do. Most of them are here tonight, so we appreciate them being here. But just in terms of the structure and getting the work done, these are the people that make that happen, from, you know, our community engagement and our engagement offices down to even our internship coordinators that run the internship program, to our support staff to just keep everything rolling. So, they do a ton of work to make all of this happen. Much of our work this year and our work plan is centered around partnerships, and that's kind of where we felt like we all came together as a group when we started this journey back in July, just kind of reframing what we wanted to do around partnerships. And so, we have retweeted a little bit of the Partners in Ed program under Partner Connect. We've designated areas that we feel like people would be interested in partnering with a school system and tried to make it a little bit easier to onboard them. We've got an official kind of website that they can go to register, or they can also log those volunteer hours, so we'll have metrics moving forward. In the bottom right there, you'll kind of see our current work is around just that onboarding system, our backend dashboard that we're building out through Salesforce. We're doing a lot of business and industry mapping of the community based on school district of where a lot of businesses are, may or may not be participating with us, working on a community partnership audit, just helping schools identify what their needs are in terms of partnerships. And we've never really had those deeper conversations from the district level, working on school training for partnerships, and also working on a platform to develop just a kind of a central repository for all the different ways that partners would like to participate. These are just two examples of events that we have had this year. You may have attended the Stakeholder Summit that we have in the fall each year just for additional training on ways to partner and where we're at in terms of workforce development. And then also, last Friday, we had a partner breakfast, kind of a thank you to our partners for potential partners as well as our existing partners, and there's a picture of that below. And then the other picture is something that we were able to do with our Aspiring Leaders Program, just bringing in community members for them to talk about how they partner and why they partner with the school district. A lot of our work around community events are, they have been longstanding in the community in terms of kind of the notoriety, but these are other things that our department works on. Certainly, the work of the foundation is a huge piece of the community investment into our school system, but we also do these other programs, Teacher of the Year, Principal for a Day, the Heroes Program. We work with graduations, with the high schools with the graduations, Spelling Bee, and we've tried to be more intentional about our events being more organized and public because we've got a lot of people that say, "I want to get involved, but I really don't know where to start." So, we've tried to do a better job of communication with that. Also, under our department, we work with the Focal Center next door. Most people have visited Focal, but that is a flagship, a very active piece of our community engagement. But really, Focal serves as a learning center for our school system, for our community. It also allows us to have rental facilities as well as theater venues. A big part of Focal this year has really been bringing and tying in stronger to the fine arts community. We have, our fine arts programs are some of the greatest in the nation. We've really been able to leverage Focal and the facilities there to ramp those efforts up. So, these are some of the examples of what we've done around fine arts communities and just, just all the different events and receptions and field trips and things like that that we're able to bring students to the Focal Center as part of that. Rental facilities, obviously, we rent the facility out to community groups or individuals who want to have experiences at Focal as well as our theater shows. That's a copy of the 2526 lineup for Focal, so we put that in there as well. And then, a big piece of what we've done this year is just that reinvestment piece of what, what we're doing to generate revenue back into our fine arts programming into the district. And so, those are some examples of that. We're working currently on our fine arts grants to school and making a big investment back. That just helps our teachers, our fine arts teachers, with things that they may need that are not necessarily supported other ways, but also allowing them access to equipment and training that we can provide as well with the expertise of the staff at Focal. Shifting gears a little bit into workforce development, most of you probably follow House Bill 982 that was actually passed last year in terms of the legislative session, but this really allowed Georgia to have one defined list of what industries and what careers are considered high demand. So, again, that takes our partnerships into where our students are hopefully going to be employed at some point, but we're now following a consistent list with economic development, with school systems, with the governor's office. And so, each region, and we're under the ARC, each region has that particular list. And for the first time ever, you're seeing more of, kind of that list include a lot of the fine arts spaces. So, the timing was great with all that for us to be thinking about the fine arts space in terms of what we'd already been doing with career tech. So, I put a link to the QR code if you want to learn more about the high-demand career list. We started work on this probably, I guess, in 2014 in terms of our first workforce strategy, and this is kind of our guiding star for our programming. This program is very specific to career tech based on the history of where we've been, but we're excited this will sunset in 2026. And so, we're already starting to work, how do we incorporate fine arts into that workforce development space around creative industries? And so, that process will continue, we'll continue working on that process next school year. We've also worked hard over the past few years to, again, that K-12 continuum of life skills and that career exploration that you heard some about earlier today, just what are we doing starting in elementary school? We've got about half of our elementary schools now in this space with us, with a lot of our career tech programming. And so, that just kind of gives you an outline of what we're doing and all the experiences that our students can have from kindergarten through 12th grade in our school district. And then, really, this is where we spend a lot of our time with instruction, facilities, equipment around fine arts and career tech. And so, these are just some of our high school and middle school offerings in those spaces. We also work with dual enrollment and our junior achievement programs as well as our internship program. I mentioned earlier that program. We've got about 1,000 kids that are in the community every day doing some type of internship experience. So, that program is just amazing of what's happening with those students. Other things, and you may have been to some of these before, but these are just some of our programs and experiences that we run for our students in fine arts and career tech. So, anything from ambassador programs to some of our, more of our employability skills development programs that, but this is a very important part of what we do because, again, we do want them to be able to leave us and know where their next step is. So, a lot of different experiences there in programming. We're excited next year to be rolling out the Educator Workforce Academy. This is a partnership that we're working on with, in partnership with some of our community stakeholders, but this is going to allow our counselors and teachers to be able to go through really four deep sessions around economic development and industry training in the community. Our CTSOs probably is what we are most known for across the country, really in Forsyth County, and you can kind of see these numbers. And so, look at that for just a second in terms of the largest, 10 largest school districts, and those are the number of student memberships that we have in Forsyth County. So, we are really proud of those numbers. Our students do very, very well, and they want these opportunities really to develop those leadership experiences and opportunities just to travel and compete with students around the state and the country. So, we're super proud of those numbers. This is a lot, but I'm going to include it in here, and you can look at it later, but we were recently at one of six school districts in the state at a recent state conference that were named exemplary districts for our work. And so, this, again, there's 180 school districts in Georgia. These were the districts who received, but just look at the numbers of, you know, industry certifications our district is having, the number of national CTSO winners compared to other districts in the state. And it's incredible what's happening with our programs. It continues with state officers, so these are student state officers. We were able to draw down equipment grants, and then we also were recognized for expending all of our CTAE grants that we received. So, we did get a Golden Key Award. Those students in the picture are holding that award from the state. But again, out of 180 school districts in Georgia, we're super proud of the performance of our CTAE programs. It continues with, there are two presidential scholars in the state. We have one of those at Lambert High School. We are an EDP district, and I'll talk about that in just a second, so that kind of shows the map of those districts. And then, we're super proud that we have two out of 20 in Georgia, Lauren Westbrook and Stephanie Pickens. They're a part of LEED CTAE, so Leadership Development Program. Again, there's only 20 in the state, and we have two of them. We recently finished a year-long process for our state economic development certification, and this is a process that our whole team has been involved in for about a year. And they range and evaluate us in those criteria that are listed there on the left in different areas of our programming. And then, we had a big visit with that team in March where they went for, you know, industry involvement and just what key stakeholders were involved in our program. So, we were able to have them in the community for all day, taking them to schools and taking them in to meet with our business and community people. And so, that was a great experience. If we do receive that certification, it comes from the Georgia Academy of Economic Development, and we'll know, we'll find out later in the summer if we earned that designation. But that was a good process for us to just evaluate and kind of reflect on where we're at and where we are ready to head next. And then, I wanted to just close out with this. This is a Student of the Year, this is kind of our season of Student of the Year, and this is just one example, again, fine arts or career tech. Our graduation rate is 100% for those students that are involved in those pathways. And so, this is an example of why these programs make such a difference in the lives of our students. So, I just wanted to share this with you tonight.
CTAE means an opportunity to explore your interests and really find your talents and find out what you want to do in the future.
All through middle school and major school, we are giving these cool classes, but CTA to me is this amazing chance to really dive in and be connected with peers who share the same passion and take these classes that you're really interested in.
It's just given me the opportunity to have my spark for my love of marketing. It really just lets me have my passion of helping others and just have somewhere to let it thrive and have it grow.
I feel like CTAE is really a way that students can redefine their interests.
At the start of my pathway, I thought I wanted to be a veterinarian, and then I learned that there is many other careers in the animal science, and I learned that I want to be a wildlife biologist instead.
To me, CTA means making a career lead to reality.
It has made me more creative. I have learned to find ways to channel my creativity because interior design and fashion are incredibly creative, like making a dress out of monster cans, being there for me to like see what the education offered look like.
I initially went to high school thinking I was going to be an engineer, and then I transferred to Easterside, and then I started in the culinary pathway, and it completely changed my entire worldview. I learned how much I love cooking, and it's just completely changed my view on everything.
Being able to go through this pathway and able to explore my interests and find out what I want to do, it's really allowed me to build my skills especially and allowed me to create amazing things and have amazing opportunities.
Being part of CTAE has really solidified where I'm going to go in college and my future career aspirations.
These past three years, being in my pathway and my teachers helping to build this confidence in me, telling me I should go to med, medical school, and that I'm capable of it, and that really has inspired me and built the confidence to say, "I want to go to medical school now. That's what I plan to do."
It's kind of shown me what I want to do for the rest of my life. I really wouldn't be able to do it without my marketing pathway, without the marketing teachers along the way, just everyone who's been able to support me through this.
To me, CTAE means community, a sense of belonging, and just being able to figure out who you are, explore your interests, but also maintaining your friendships and being around peers who are into the same things as you. We're all working towards bettering ourselves and trying to become like who we want to see, who we want to be like in the future, working towards those goals.
Being surrounded by peers who are just so intelligent and share the same level of love and interest is really helpful and really builds me up as a person.
Through CTAE, I was able to find my cohort of people that really helped me get out of my comfort zone and put myself out there. Being able to go to your community and use the skills that you're learning in the classrooms and being able to apply them in real life, all the teachers are so supportive and they're so encouraging for all students.
CTAE for me means leadership. Leadership is one of the biggest and best things you could possibly have in career.
Being in the pathway has given me a lot of opportunities to express myself as a leader.
My pathway taught me leadership and how to follow certain orders, which just helped me in general.
Part of CTAE is my interviews, and I find that it has really helped me to get ready for my future. If I didn't do my CTAE, I wouldn't be able to sit here and talk like this or be professional without my CTAE.
And so, it's sort of just telling me what I really want to do in the future has changed me a lot in terms of how I manage my time, how I manage myself, that I present myself.
I used to be really shy, like really quiet, I really wasn't good at talking, but then through my pathway, I've met a lot of people, and I had to kind of become more comfortable with these people because I've been in the same class with the same people for three years. So, I really had to learn to open up my kids, like talking to people, especially when going like field trips to dealerships.
It's helped me grow in understanding other people and their needs.
My CTAE has made me more driven. I feel like I have a lot more drive in my passions and my interests now. I feel like I have the opportunity to explore the things I love.
It's inspiring these students to go beyond what their classroom teaches them and to dive deeper into their interests and into their passions that if we didn't have these pathways, would be very hard to with just the basic poor classes at our high schools.
I believe CTAE embodies the future of the students.
CTAE has just been such a great impact on my high school career, and I really wouldn't be a person today without it.
After high school, I would love to be a non-profit business owner as well as an entrepreneur.
I want to do something connected to interior design or psychology, or both. So, after high school, I want to go to the University of Alabama, and I plan to get a degree in special education and also get a degree in enforcement.
My long term goal is to own a restaurant and have that name known for having good food, for having good service, and just to serve anyone who comes and help those who need it as well.
After high school, I plan to hopefully work for NASA as an aerospace engineer.
After high school, I plan to do UNG online and hopefully get a bachelor's degree in either business or engineering.
After high school, I'm planning on pursuing a marketing degree at the University of Georgia. After high school, I plan to attend engineering.
After high school, I plan to attend the University of Georgia and major in fisheries and wildlife with an emphasis on wildlife biology.
I plan on going to college. I'm not sure what I want to do for work afterwards, but college is on my next step.
After high school, I plan to attend Georgia Tech as a biochemistry major, and then I plan to pursue medicine in the future as a cardiologist.
Yeah, so after high school, I really hope to go to a college that has an artificial intelligence and machine learning-centered major.
After high school, I seek a degree in history from a pre-law, and for law school, I aim to go hard.
After high school, I want to go to college at UNC Charlotte and get a degree in motorsports engineering, and then eventually maybe go to NASCAR and be a motorsports engineer.
I plan to attend the University of Georgia and major in biology on a pre-med track.
For me, CTAE means inspiring, opportunity.
The future.
Professionalism.
Excellence.
Leadership.
Public speaking skills, exposure.
Passion.
Achievement.
I'd be with the community.
All right. So, that's all I got. Those were our final list of the year for CTAE, so we just appreciate the time to share. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Lowe.
Yep.
All right. Next up is Mr. Larry Hamel with the Finance Report. And as a subitem, we have an audit report with Mr. Derek Hershey and Mr. Todd McClellan as well.
Don't get up yet, fellas. He's going to be a while.
You have a video?
You don't have a video or?
No, no video tonight.
Accountant of the year or something?
This month, we're going to talk about the March 2025 financial statements. As always, we keep goal free in mind when we talk about the financial statements. Cash flow, we started the month with $288 million, we ended the month with $258 million. The revenue and expenses were normal for this time of the year. This time last year, we had about $244 million in cash at the end of March. Year-to-date budget, revenue-wise, we're at 85.13% collection rate. This time last year, we're 86.81. We're a little bit behind. The year before that, 84.85. Last year was a good year for collections compared to this year just because of some unusual items we collect. unusual items we collected, like some additional funds that came in for a one-time payment for evolarm tax and TVAT was greater than we thought that year. With that being said, it's still normal for this time of the year for the rate we've collected. On the expense side, we're at 74.99. We should be at 75%. You can see how close we are to that. This time last year, we're at 74.52%. The expenses look normal for this time of the year for most of the categories. On debt service cash analysis, between the regular debt service account and debt service LGIP account, we have about $596,000 in those two accounts. This time last year, we had right about $4.9 million. So you can see that we're keeping the millage rate low like we have and it's very tight in terms of how much money we collect versus the amount of money we have reserved for the future payments. Splat six is the $18 million. This time last year, we had 46.5. We have a total of 18.6. Last year, we had 61.5. You can see that Splat six account, LGIP is just a money extra we have sitting there collecting interest, but we are spending that money at a good rate compared to the projects we've currently going on. Special revenue funds are exactly where they need to be this time of the year. There's no real big changes or surprises there. On the capital projects and school food services cash analysis, capital projects has about $27.1 million. This last time, last year, excuse me, this time last year was 15. School food services, we're at $19.4 million. Last year, we're at 21.5. As you can see, the collections and the disbursements for school nutrition are about par for this time of the year, which is correct. On the investment summary, Fund 100, Jerome Fund LGIP, we have about $185.5 million. And this is what's going to be used up between now and when we start collecting funds in October, November, based on the millage rate and the property tax for this year. This time last year, we had about $171 million. Food service has about $118. We had about 3.9, excuse me, debt service, $118,000. School nutrition has about $16 million. This time last year, we had about 15,2. Splat six, again, $18 million. We had about 46 last year. In total, we have about $220 million. Last year, we had about 247. On Splat, just to kind of point a couple of things out, you can see when we look at the March collections for February received, it was about 4.7. It was down a little bit from last month and it's only 1.88 year-over-year. Right now, we are collecting just, if you add all these months up, about a 15% ahead of schedule compared to where we thought we would be. But if you look at this last several months combined, we're really only about 4% to 7%, depending on what combination of months you use. So even though we are scheduled to collect six months early on Splat six, if things keep going the way they're going, that's probably going to change to three months. And if it gets any worse due to possibly terrorists or an economy or recession, then we may be on par collecting exactly 16 months of activity. We've got to wait and really see what happens next couple of months. On cash balances, with elementary schools, we have about $5.1 million in balances. We have a 5-2 last year and the receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. Middle school, we had 2.2. We had 2.3 last year. High school is currently, we have about 7.3, we have about 7.3. And again, receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. Overall, high schools have about 50% of the money. Elementary school is about 35 and of course, middle school is about 15. And that's the financials for March 2025. Any questions? Next, we are going to talk about the auto letter. Derek, if you want to come up, we can tag team this. So I'm going to talk about the actual finding itself in comparison to what the audit was done by Malden Jenkins was. And Derek is going to talk to the solutions that we come up with it. So basically what happened was Malden Jenkins came out and did the 2024 audit. During that audit, they have to do something called a single audit requirement for the federal government, which means they have to pick certain federal programs to audit every year. Not to get too complicated, but there's a type A program, there's a type B program. Type A programs are a certain dollar amount above a certain amount. This year was about $800,000. So all the A programs have to be audited at least every, once every three years. Then B programs would be all those programs we have below that $800,000 threshold. And those are audited based on a five-year program or as needed to make up the difference. They have to come up with a certain amount of federal money to audit. Typically, it's 45 to 50%. When you have a program like school nutrition, it's such a large amount of money, it by itself usually makes almost 50% by itself. And usually they'll pick a couple of small programs as type Bs to figure it out the difference between whatever that amount is versus the 50%. With that being said, school nutrition was the large type A program they audited this year. During that audit, a couple of things they do is they have a document they get from us that lists every single internal control process we have in place, whether it be for taking receipts in, paying out payroll, booking stuff to our books. When they take that internal control document, they take it and apply it to the test they have for single audits. In the single audit report, testing for school nutrition, which is probably a 30 or 40-page document, there are certain steps they have to go through during the testing. One of the steps is they pull random people for payroll and they look at it, make sure however that person was paid, met the requirements for all the internal controls we have set up. In this case, they found two situations where one person was paid who had been no longer working for the school system in the amount of about $2,165. So that was against internal controls. The second thing they found was they had a person who actually worked for us, but internal control says not only does that person sign it, but her supervisor has to sign the document. There was no supervisor signature on that particular item. So these two items added up, add up to a certain amount of about $3,100, almost $200. And then what they do is they take that dollar amount and there's a testing confidence, they're testing confidence level, like 95/5. They take that ratio and they apply these arrows to the total population of payroll for school nutrition, in which case was over $7 million. At that point, when they apply this and project it out, the potential allowable cost that was spent that should not have been was in excess of $40,000. Because of that dollar amount and the state laws and federal laws, they came back and said that we would be listed as a moderate risk audit going forward because of the $40,000 unallowable cost that they figured out based on the testing going forward. Now, this is a one-year finding. We're put on the moderate list. Today, we're presenting this data to you so you can understand it. If this finding goes away next year, we will come off that moderate list going forward. One of the requirements is within a month of the finding being issued, we are here today to present the findings to you and what information we provided not only to Malden Jenkins to say we're going to fix this finding, but also what we're presenting to the state of Georgia through this letter that you assigned at the end of the meeting today, the state that you've been notified about the finding, how we're going to fix it going forward. And hopefully this will not be an issue the next year. Now, I have ultimate confidence both in Todd and Derek, after talking to them, that the changes have been put in place to make sure this won't happen going forward. And I'll let Derek talk to that a little bit.
Thanks, Larry. So part of-
Can I just make clarification to Larry? The actual finding was about $3,200. It wasn't $40,000. That's just what their extrapolated amount potentially could be.
Correct.
But it was, at the end of the day, it was $3,200.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's two conditions that we need to address. The first condition is making sure that as staff members, our staff members are either employed or separated. Typically, our process calls for a principal leader, department chair, to do a personnel action document. And so for a school nutrition worker, that can be done in one of two ways. One, the principal or designate can do it. Two, food nutrition can do it. And a lot of our schools, it's very different in terms of who makes that decision. And so our solution to this is that the school principal will be the sole person responsible or designate at the school level will be responsible for turning in the personnel action document, both for employment for food nutrition employees moving forward or separation of employees moving forward. So that way, it puts, it puts the responsibility on the hiring or separation of the person. And so that's the first thing. The second thing that we're going to do along with that is to be able, we have something called staff allotment managers. In the past, food nutrition employees, they've been their own entity, although they're working inside the building. We've typically not included those employees on the staff allotment managers. And to help with position control, that will now be added to the principal's list so that they can track and make sure that they understand all of the employees that are in their building. So that will, that will meet the first condition. The second condition that we are working through is really another layer of trying to make sure that we just monitor, monitor the time sheets are signed. And so on top of the time sheets that are signed by the employees, the assistant manager or manager are expected to sign off or expected to check that there's a signature on that time sheet. The food nutrition department will also put a second-tier check on that moving forward. And so that way, we are double-checking that to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
And on top of that, I'm going to go to a finance, additional finance course this summer so that I can check on Larry, who's checking on Derek, who's checking on Todd, who's checking on principals. So all will be in order.
I just want to make sure I understood the implication correctly. So the actual error, you know, they sample a part of the population, right? They're not sampling everything. And they actually found $3,293 in errors. And when they apply, you know, sample size, standard deviation, whatever they say, there's a probability that the real error is 40,000 if you were-
Correct.
-you were to check everything.
Right. So if they were to do 100%, the theory is that they had to have done 100% testing of every single employee in school nutrition. Their thought process is based on the confidence level of the testing level they did do, they would have found about $40,000 in error.
Thank you. Questions? Well, I appreciate it, guys. An enterprise of this size, this is not unheard of. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our goals always be 100% correct.
I wanted to play basketball professionally. And my signature is going to be added to the list of. All right. Next up is Dr. Amy Bartley with Distraction-Free Learning.
Long time since we've seen each other here. Hang on, I got my glasses on here, Suzy.
Do you mind just whipping through that whole presentation?
Let me just, let me just pull that back up. Um.
Is there a rod?
Okay. Yes?
What is it called?
That's a great question. Is it?
Is that it?
Larry, you're such a help. Thank you so much. Larry coming in for technology. Mike Evans might have some competition. Well, good evening. It's great to see everybody again. We, as you know, had an amazing turnout last night for our Disconnect to Reconnect evening. And I just want to highlight again the priorities related back to the board governance goals and our strategic plan, which is the area of social emotional health and the learner experience, which the exploration into cell phone usage certainly hits very prominently with both of these focus areas. It has been a pleasure for our district leaders to delve into this area all year long, quite frankly, in terms of research, but more importantly, stakeholder feedback holistically across the board. And we just want to highlight for you this evening the steps our district leadership has taken to thoroughly investigate this matter and research it and hear from all of our stakeholders that this, this would potentially impact. We began in the first semester of this school year with Dr. Young attending meetings with the local school councils at all 43 of our schools where this topic was discussed. Additionally, we have three superintendent advisory groups, teacher groups, student groups, and parent and community groups that we again have presented and sought their feedback to give to us. Dr. Young also in the second semester has put together focus groups with students at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high, visiting with students in every school, fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. Additionally, we just recently administered through Dr. Dugan's department and communications a stakeholder survey to all of our parents, district staff, leadership, and had an overwhelming response, which we will share with you momentarily. And then finally culminating last night with our Disconnect to Reconnect Town Hall. So we really feel that we've spent some extensive time and energy and efforts exploring the thoughts of all of our stakeholders on this very important topic that hits two key areas of our strategic plan. That stakeholder feedback survey, just to provide you with up-to-date information, as of earlier this afternoon, we've had well over 3,700 responses to that. And I can, I can vouch for Dr. Dugan and myself, who have really truly read through every single response to see what we're seeing from our community members, which includes our students, our parents, our community. And we see that there is strong support for restricting or limiting cell phone usage during the academic school day. It is notable that there are some questions that do address how to contact children during the school day, emergency situations and those type of things, as we alluded to in the town hall last night, were also some things that we noted in those surveys. And we see recommendation that we need to have a balanced approach as we move forward. So at this time, we really want to lean back into you, our Board of Education, for your advisement on the direction that you'd like to see us take as next steps.
Thank you again for the presentation. I know it was a lot of work and research and data. I know myself, having a child in school, I'm very much looking forward to some restrictions. I would ask next, you know, to start creating what that's going to look like. I think there's, is a lot of components to think about, considering expectations, exceptions, waivers, and ultimately consequences, because the reinforcement is going to be really critical and probably the most difficult part.
Well, I thought last night was phenomenal. I thought it was important for the community to see the statistics that we see, but the general member of the public doesn't see. I don't think a lot of people really realize the depth and breadth of the problem, but it's serious. K8, I think, is essentially decided for us. You know, the General Assembly passed a law which will very likely be signed by the governor, which says no phones bell to bell. So I think at this point, it's logical that we move forward with, with policy on that. Nine through 12, high school is going to be a little more nuanced and complex. I think there's a lot of things to consider. The maturity level, the lives of the kids, some work, some leave early, they have flexible schedules. There's no blanket approach, I think. We were brainstorming amongst us, so this is, could be dangerous what I'm going to say next, but maybe a hybrid approach for high school is something we can consider. The way that, for example, driving is a privilege. It's not guaranteed. You know, you have to meet certain academic conditions, attendance conditions, whatever it is. Maybe for the older kids, juniors and seniors, for example, you know, phones are a privilege and you have to earn it. It could be a motivator, it could be something that helps them do better. It could be a nightmare to enforce and, you know, there's a lot of questions about that. So we're giving you guys a big challenge here. But I think what we've all said and there's, you know, consensus amongst us is a balanced, moderate approach that considers the many factors. But I do think it has to be holistic. There has to be enforcement, you know, expectations, because, you know, I mean, let's be honest, if, cell phones are not allowed right now according to our code of conduct, right? But every kid has a cellphone. So there has to be a culture change where we don't want to be the phone police, but guess what? We're the phone police now. So part of it is being forced on us and part of it is because we know it's the right thing to do. And I think there has to be serious consequences. If there's no teeth to this, then, you know, kids are going to do whatever. They'll, they'll put that phone wherever to get it into the classroom, right? But personally, I favor, you know, bell-to-bell restrictions, absolutely in K8, even before the law, I think we were going there. And I do think at the high school level, more nuanced, more, more things to consider, but it's not good for them neither. So my, my recommendation would be to move forward and maybe, you know, when it comes to the high school level, have some options to consider, maybe some brainstorming sessions.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that last night was really neat to see the community come together. And I think we got pretty clear- come together. And I think we got pretty clear expectations last night from that crowd. One of the things they talked a lot about, or not a lot, but one of the individuals brought up was the educational component to this, and that we should offer educational classes, maybe at the life class or something in the eighth grade about, you know, digital citizenship and the proper way of using it. I know that talking to the board, you know, this is something that's passionate to all of us, and Mr. Usherwood shared the, the fact that we should also educate parents and give them some resources to help with this. And so as we go out with this plan is, let's talk about educating why we're doing this, not only to the student population, but to the parents' populations, and maybe provide some resources to them of, you know, what tools are out there that can help them as parents as we try to navigate this transition. And then also to Mr. Valdez's point about the high school, it's a, you know, it's a certain level of maturity there, you know, that can they get addicted? Yeah. Can they be part of it? But they also have a level of maturity growing into their adulthood, right? And so I think that we just need to find, and I think that Mr. Young started the conversation, let's have a common sense approach to this. It's not easy. I know you're like, what are you talking about? Like, like, but no, I mean, I think you guys can, you have the right, you guys are in it every day. You guys see this every day. You understand how to deal with this. You understand, like, you know, what, what you guys are seeing. And so I think you guys would come up with something thinking about all that.
I think the only thing I'll add is we've got to make sure, I think it's probably one of the most important things, is that we are consistent, you know, and we make sure we put in, you know, into our policy that we are consistent school to school. Because even now, we have policies and we may not be as consistent school to school, but this is not one that we can be, you know, inconsistent on. I think we've got to be consistent. And I think we heard that, Mr. McCall and I heard that this morning from several principals. And, and, you know, I think they are wanting that as well.
And I think we need to be very clear, like, this is coming from us, the school board. Like, we are representing the community. We are setting the standard and the policy. And you guys have to go and enforce it, right? And you have to put it out there. But we take ownership of that decision.
Absolutely. And I think with, you know, with that is also the expectation that there'll, there'll be enforcement and this won't be just another, you know, bit of useless information on, on a paper. So I mean, I don't think we need any official action or, or vote, but I, I can say that with confidence that there is unanimous support amongst us to move forward with, with policy.
So, and I, and I outlined the process last night, but our, our team will go to work over the, over the course of the next month to, to put together a policy as well as, you know, procedures for how this would be. We'll, we'll put those together, come back to you in May with what we've had put together. If there ends up being a policy change or new policy created, that will be something to vote on at a minimum. Any practices that we're going to change in our regulations and our procedures, we'll share those as well. I, I just think that, I, I think we're at a really important point right now. The, the phone thing is just one piece of a larger, of a larger goal for social emotional well-being that goes through our strategic plan. I, I have said to our staff, I've never really said this publicly before, but, you know, in the, in the life of a superintendent, you think about the big things that are important to you. And, and it's certainly the driving force for me is our strategic plan. But I've, I've joked, but there's a little truth in the joking. There, there's three things that I hope that we accomplish, you know, in our time together or my time with you. One is to dramatically scale back screen time. And phones are a part of that, but, but it's one part of that. But the scaling back of screen time and technology time is a major cultural change, because for the last 17 to 20 years with BYOT, we've been the technology leader. But things have changed. We've seen the impact of all that technology. And now we've got to try to dial things back in. And that's a major cultural shift for our community, for, for our teachers, you know, in particular, who've come to rely on technology, particularly during the pandemic. So this is one element of, of a larger picture that we're going to continue to bring to you. But, but my goal is if we could scale back screen time, number one. Number two, here it goes, I'm saying it publicly. But if we can find a way to increase recess time and unstructured play time and more time outside for kids of all grades, I, I think is vital to their well-being. And the third thing, and the timing could not have been more perfect tonight, and it's something that Mr. McCall and I have been talking about for, for 10 years now, but it's really getting serious about embedding life skills. And I've said before, if, if we increase recess, scale back the screen time, put in life skills, then certainly my time and our time, I think are going to be, going to be considered a great success.
We heard this morning from a junior at, or was he a senior, that he would love to have recessed back in high school.
I would love some at work. All right, just, just to recap. So I think you have unanimous consent to go forward with a policy update for the benefit of the public. Whenever that policy is ready for prime time, it'll sit for public comment for a 30-day period, even, even longer if we decide that it could be longer. My commitment to the public is during that 30-day period, I'll, I'll personally go out to the community and hold several town halls and, and, you know, take the arrows. I, I do it routinely, so I'm, I'm pretty used to it. And I'm sure some of the other members will, will join me as we travel around the county. We do want public input, for better for worse, because we can't do this without the parents. If it's just us guys, then, you know, it's not going to work. So...
I'm happy to jump out and take arrows on this issue with you and anytime you need me out there.
That's our job. That's our job. All right.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next up, Splas accomplishments with Mr. Matt Work and Dr. Michelle Dugan. Two regulars here.
Come up with a handshake.
All right. Hang in there, guys. We're getting towards the end, I promise.
Okay, it's not, it's not that bad.
Do we need to do like a stand and stretch moment? I don't want anybody getting dizzy or anything.
Quickly, I'll just give an introduction. Of course, we've been really fortunate to come talk to you about our Splas highlights, those tax dollars at work, the special purpose local auction sales tax, of course, is that penny sales tax that people who purchase items in Forsyth, whether they live here or not, goes to really, really incredibly important things in our system. And what's great about the one we're going to share with you tonight at Forsyth Central High School is it really touches what Valerie and her team have talked about tonight, which is that learning experience, making sure that our infrastructure and we're keeping up with what the needs are, both for our students locally, but also as we look toward their future and their careers. So I am going to turn it over to the other half of the M and M show, Mr. Matt Work, to talk a little bit about Forsyth Central High. We'll play the video first. Oh, he turned, he got me. He turned me off. So Forsyth Central High School focuses on excellence in academics, arts, and athletics. Since 1955, was formerly Forsyth County High School. And to, to see the evolution and changes on that campus is really exciting. And so I'm going to now turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Michelle. This was exciting because a lot of times people associate Splas with brand new buildings, new large additions, things of that nature. This is an excellent example of what Splas dollars do in our existing schools. We talked back when Splas 6 was initially rolled out, talking about not building as many new schools, only having the one new replacement midway, and investing all of the rest of the Splas dollars for capital projects back into our existing schools. And Central is a great recipient of that. And we were able to do that. So this is a good example of Splas not only being just new buildings, new additions, new schools. These are things that can go in and we can renovate existing spaces. We can add smaller spaces. We can renovate athletics. The, the gamut is huge about what we can use Splas dollars for that helps keep those other budgets down. But again, a shout out to my team about managing this project. Again, another project we finished four months earlier, which means we can give it to our students and our community again, earlier than what were projected. We hold our contractors very accountable. Also, we keep the change orders down, less than half a percent of the overall budget. As you will see, that is a consistent thing with us. We do a great job with our design and we don't allow extra money to be thrown into it. We do a great job on the front end. So that's another kudos to my team. It's great. Also, Splas can go into I-Focus, which is our special ed population. It can go into our band and instruments and things of that nature. It's not just for specific classrooms. So that's a good way. CTA classroom conversions. The athletic piece was great because it needed the upgrade. Central's gym needed that. A lot of that work was done through us managing that instead of having a contractor. I personally managed two of those projects. Our maintenance people took on some of those projects. Just to give a shout out, my maintenance workers changed every seat in that gym so that we didn't have to pay a contractor to do that. So that helps us keep our costs down. It does add work to our existing crews, but that's what, how dedicated they are to the school district. So that's very important. But also going back to just renovations of the HVAC, painting, flooring, water heaters, things of that nature, parking lots. Another great example, what Splas can be used for. Anything with that building is very important. And also it takes us to a more energy efficient with more fresh air in our buildings, which is something Forsyth County has invested in since 2010. And yes, Mr. McCall, I wrote it down on my sheet, everything we did at Forsyth Central was debt free. There you go. So again, comments, questions, anything?
Matt, I'll say, I think one thing we, we've seen a couple of these. I think Lakeside was an example of this. And you mentioned it a little bit, but I think it's a really important note that you're replacing a lot of HVAC units at this time. And we're seeing new technology. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard you say, yes, we may be spending the money upfront, but these new units are so much more efficient that we're actually saving a lot of money in their daily operation.
Yes, absolutely. It's a very good point, because I think next month, you're going to see a little bit more of a nuts and bolts about how much HVAC that we're replacing. And again, it's also being done because it's time for reimbursement from the state. So we're doing that very strategically, because we can get a reimbursement through the capital outlay program that the governor's office has approved. We can only apply for specific things, and some of that is HVAC. So we get a better reimbursement. But ultimately, yes, it's a lot more energy efficient. We're hoping, and so is Larry, hoping that our energy costs go down. But our units needed those changes. And honestly, going into this, not just heating and cooling, the fresh air units, the ERU units that we have and invested since 2010, no other school district does what we do. And also it showed during COVID, we did not have to close, because we did tests through our engineers that we change out air in existing space every 20 minutes. The industry standard is every 90 minutes. So our buildings have more fresh air in them than anywhere else in the state. And people come to us to see how we do that. So yes, the infrastructure piece is critical, and Splas dollars being able to do that helps the maintenance general fund budget stay low. Great. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Work.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up on the agenda, we have an action item, which is a board resolution regarding growth in the county. Mrs. Hoyes is going to read the resolution into the record, and then we'll have a moment for discussion.
Forsyth County Board of Education Resolution requests for a reduction in high-density residential development and increase in high-quality commercial growth. Whereas Forsyth County has experienced residential growth at an extremely fast pace over the last 10 years or more. And whereas, as a result, the enrollment of the Forsyth County School District has increased by nearly 30% since 2015, reaching nearly 55,000 students as of 2025. And whereas, in order to meet the demands of this residential and subsequent student growth, the Forsyth County School District has invested over $400 million in capital expenditures during this period without borrowing any funds and aggressively repaying outstanding debt. And whereas, growth continues at a steady pace across the county and the city of Coming, placing increasing strain on the capacity of the Forsyth County School District's most recently constructed schools, many of which are already at or near capacity. And whereas, high-density residential development presents a unique challenge to the school system's financial sustainability, generating significantly more students within smaller geographic areas while contributing comparatively less in local tax revenue. And whereas, the Forsyth County Board of Education has reduced its millage rate three times in the past three years, totaling more than a three-mill reduction. And whereas, the Forsyth County School District continues to perform at the highest levels, consistently ranking as Georgia's top-performing large school district and among the best overall in various educational metrics. And whereas, the Forsyth County Board of Education voluntarily adopted a 4% homestead exemption that took effect in January 2025, providing direct tax relief to homeowners. Now therefore, be it resolved, that in order to preserve and strengthen its ability to continue building schools with cash, rapidly reduce existing debt, and provide ongoing tax relief to Forsyth County residents through reduced millage rates and exemptions. One, the Forsyth County Board of Education respectfully requests that the Forsyth County Government and the city of Coming take effective measures to reduce or eliminate high-density residential development. Two, take proactive steps to attract, support, and expand high-quality commercial development across the, the county and city. And three, the Forsyth County Board of Education affirms its commitment to partner with both the Forsyth County Government and the city of Coming in all reasonable efforts to attract and enable high-quality commercial investment in our shared community. Four, the Forsyth County Board of Education calls on the business and development community to partner with our school system and the cost of education infrastructure in order to ensure our school district remains amongst the top-performing large school systems in the nation. Adopted this day, the 15th of April, 2025, by the Forsyth County Board of Education.
All right. So I'll queue up the discussion.
Should we have a motion and then go into discussion?
All right. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution as...
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. McCall, a second by Mr. Grimes. So we'll open up the floor, thank you for the reminder. We'll open up the floor to discussion. I, I'd like to start that. So some people might be scratching their heads, you know, what the heck is the school board talking about residential growth? And that's, that's probably a, a fair question for the average person who doesn't pay much attention to these things until you get your tax bill. We've taken as a, as a board, this board and prior boards, plenty of criticism, a, a lot of it fair, about our portion of the tax bill. There's, you know, that's something that's frequently discussed, how your tax bill is predominantly going to your school system. Something that's not discussed, you know, as much is the fact that we sit at the end of a chain of decisions and bear the brunt of the financial costs of growth, and we have absolutely no jurisdiction in growth. So we do not add a single student to this county, but we pay, by we, I mean you, for every single one of them. We've taken steps the last few years to aggressively lower our millage rate more than anybody in this state, to operate on a cash basis, which Mr. McCall is very proud of. He's one, he was one of the, you know, the developers or the principal developer of that, that concept on the board. We've adopted a 4% homestead exemption voluntarily. We didn't need it to be imposed on us. voluntarily. We didn't need it to be imposed on us like other school systems had it imposed on them. And, you know, this year particularly, but also the last few years, we have aggressively reduced our operating expenses, unnecessary expenses, and the proverbial tightening of the belt. All of that, and I'll be very blunt, that is unsustainable unless growth slows in this county. If we continue to add 1,200 students per year, which is essentially a middle school's worth of students or roundabout, we will not be able to lower the millage rate, and you may find us raising it. That's a fact. I can sit here and, you know, make it all rainbows and unicorns, but the fact is that we need the cooperation. And I'm actually, I'm very, and I should have probably started with this. I'm very optimistic that in recent years, the last couple of years particularly, our collaboration, our work with the county commissioners and the city is a lot more effective. It's a lot more aligned. It's a lot more in sync. We're talking a lot more. We're interacting a lot more. And I want that to continue and to expand. And we need their help. The citizens need our help for tax relief. We need the other government's help to stop growth. So that's my two cents.
I'd like just to say thank you to Chairman Valdez for your leadership on this. I think this is something that should have been done several years ago. You know, I live in District One and represent District One, and District One is going through a huge growth. And when we, a couple of years ago, we built Pools Mill, beautiful school. We redistricted, and then two years later, we have trailers there, classroom trailers there. And I know they're called module classrooms, but they're really, they're trailers. And they, now we have 10, you know? And Sonny has eight. And so I take ownership of that. I think it's one of the things we failed, I failed on for that perspective. And then the other thing is, is that, you know, we have to be good stewards to the taxpayers' money. And we also have to be fair to the teachers and the staff and the principals. And this is, this costs money. You know, this is, this is a huge burden on the taxpayers. And so I will say that working with District One Commissioner Carrie Hill, her and I have a really good relationship, and we've been talking. And yes, a lot of the growth that we're seeing now has been zoning that has been approved in several years ago. They're just now coming out of the ground. But moving forward, Ms. Hill agrees with this. She agrees with this resolution, and she says something needs to happen. So along Chairman Valdez's comment about working closely with the commissioners, I think we're doing that. And I look forward to seeing that collaboration continue and working together with this. So thank you, Michael, for that.
I mean, I think I'll just echo, I think same thing what we're seeing in District One, we're seeing in District Four. You know, I drive Hopeville Road and Highway Nine, and you know what I'm saying? And we see a lot of growth up there as well. And so I think, yes, and I agree with Mr. McCall, that these are things that were approved a while ago. But I think we've got to do something.
Actually, I'm going to add, you know, we included the city of Cumming also in this. And a lot of people, I think, are often looking at the Board of Commissioners that control the growth. But the city of Cumming is also a big piece of that. And there's a good portion of my district that does get affected by the decisions they make. So I think it's, it's good that we're including them also with the Board of Commissioners.
Number one, I appreciate you taking leadership on this too, Chairman Valdez. I also appreciate the other part of this, as you, as you talk about the burden on the residential homeowners, the development of commercial strategically and high-quality commercial development, I think is another tool that would greatly help all of our taxpayers. And I appreciate your resolution, including that.
Yeah. And I think we, before asking for this, we've put our money where our mouth is. If you look at the gathering, the potential hockey stadium here in the county, the Board of Education agreed to be a strategic partner in that and is, you know, a key part of why that's moving forward. In the long run, that's going to be very beneficial to the residential taxpayers. So I think we've shown that we're willing to be partners in this. We're not coming empty-handed. We want to be part of the solution. And I want to thank Chairman John at the county commission and my own partner, Commissioner Simonson, because they've also been instrumental in this. And they've done a lot already over the years, along with Commissioner Hill, to control growth. So I think it's, we're in a good place. And I think this is just a logical next step. So if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Now, Mr. Usherwood is not here, but I know he's very supportive of this. He couldn't be here, but I know he's very supportive as well. All right, we're almost there, guys, I promise. All right, points of information, everybody should have received your points of information. Is there any questions, discussion? All right. We're going to go right into public participation. We've got two speakers. First up is Mr. Jerk Crishol. You know the rules very well, sir. So I will let you come right up.
Thank you very much. We are a nation of immigrants, a tradition that stretches back 15,000 years ago, when the first colonizers came over the Bering Strait from Asia. The creation of this nation, based on ideas rather than bloodline, has been a major factor in our greatness across nearly every measure possible throughout all history. That being said, immigration has not always been easy. Anti-Asian sentiment, as far back as the 1882 Chinese Exclusion Act, still echoes in our modern era with BLM activist attacks on innocent elderly Chinese. My own grandmother, who came here after working for the US occupation in Japan after World War II, had to wait years before it was legal for her to naturalize. Before the 1952 Immigration and Nationality Act, only Japanese born in the United States, like my grandfather in Hawaii, were allowed to become US citizens. And our struggles continue today. Biden's open border policy, which has facilitated the sex trafficking of children, has been particularly difficult to bear. And while it is good that that horrific policy is over, undoing the damage is going to take time, effort, and no small bit of pain in almost every community. There are good people who have come into our country illegally. This includes children who are trafficked illegally by their actual parents rather than sex slavers. But if we want a system that does not reward human trafficking, we cannot apply blanket forgiveness to these cases. As enforcement efforts ramp up, every single illegal immigrant in the United States is going to be faced with a choice. Do we leave before or after we're caught? And this sadly is going to include many children and families who are part of our school district. Public schools have generally been prohibited from checking immigration status as a prerequisite to enrolling children ever since the 1982 ruling in Plyler versus Doe. This puts our schools in a difficult position, where our compassion for children means that we're indirectly incentivizing an illegal network of human trafficking. I would like to propose that in order to address this dilemma, we add to our compassion rather than subtract from it. It is compassionate to provide schooling to illegal immigrant children who are here through no decision of their own. And it is also compassionate to provide information and services to the families of those illegal immigrants on how to access the necessary help to return to their countries of origin and re-enter the United States legally. I would humbly ask the board to develop a plan for providing information and support illegal immigrant families with children enrolled in our school district on how to comply with the Alien Registration Act, use the CBP Home app, safely return to their countries of origin, and then begin the legal process of immigration. I would also ask the board to make an assessment of how many illegal immigrant children are currently enrolled at all of our various schools while complying with any federal data collection laws, so that we can accurately understand the potential impact to our system if all of them find their way back to their countries of origin within the next four years. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Linga Gounder. So I will tell you the rules because he's, he comes all the time, but you don't. So you have this little device right in front of you. When the green light turns on, that starts your three-minute countdown. When it starts to flash yellow, you've got 30 seconds. And when it screams at you, just try to wrap it up, okay? Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening, board members, super and educators. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight here. My name is Linga Gounder. I'm, I lived in Forsyth County for more than 15 years and Georgia for more than 20 years. I'm here as a proud parent who values our schools and wants to make sure they stay strong and fair for everyone. First, I want to thank our amazing teachers and thank you all for the cell phone policy. I really like that. At both Decena Middle School and Brandywell Elementary, my children's have had a great teachers and principals who care about their students a lot. So we are lucky to have such dedicated teachers and educators. I'm really happy about it. Tonight, I would like to talk about how students qualify for certain advanced programs like double accelerated math track, which starts in the middle school. Right now, students need to score band nine in every subcategory of the January Beacon Test to qualify for testing May for double accelerator. This is the only criteria used today. And here is the problem. Some topics in the Beacon Test, which conducted in January, are not taught in class until March, and that makes sense. But however, how can students be expected to do really well on something they haven't learned in the class yet? So the Beacon, high criteria, ends up giving an advantage to students who has a private tutoring. A lot of local tutors know these rules, and they prepare them in advance. So it gives a little bit uneven playing field for kids who are studying only on the curriculum. Right? So that creates, it also puts a pressure on families to get outside help for advanced programs. I know it's very hard. Some of the programs is very hard, but we should try to help through the school curriculum itself. So I'm not here to complain any particular decision or anything, but like, I see this is an opportunity to improve some of the criterias. So the Beacon Test should help teachers see how students are doing, not to block some of them from the opportunities. I have, also have a handout and more details. I hope you will take a look and come up with some improvements. And I really, really appreciate. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. So you can give Mrs. Mayo the handouts. She'll make sure we get them. And also, I want to connect you with Dr. Amy Bartlett. Can you wave? She's in the back. Dr. Amy Bartlett?
Sure.
Dr. Amy Bartlett back there, she's our Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I want you to connect with her, and she's gonna, she's gonna help you with that.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
All right. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I think a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Mrs. Hoes, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. We are done, folks. Congratulations. That might be a new record.